Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the session of QuisPamSis regular meeting of our council. I'd like to ask for an approval of the agenda, please. Moved by Deputy Mayor Stryer and segmented by Councillor Donovan on the question. Please vote now. Deputy Mayor? Okay, yes. Motion carried, six zero. I would like to ask Councillor Donovan for the treaty acknowledgement and moment of reflection, please.
We would like to respectfully acknowledge that QuisPamSis exists on the traditional territory of the Woolisstewig, Malacite, and Micmac people, whose ancestors along the Pasamaquadi tribes signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the seventeen hundreds. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias, and always in the best interests of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Councillor Donovan. I have a few comments. It's been a wonderful week of action so far with the Para Hockey Cup, and I was privileged to participate in the ceremonial puck drop on Friday night with the border game between Canada and the United States. And we've seen four terrific games during the preliminary round so far. The Qplex has been buzzing with fans from near and far gathering to cheer on this world-class athletes. Tomorrow is the last day of the preliminary round, as China and Czechia play in the morning. Then Canada and the US battle it again in a matchup to determine the top seed heading into the semifinals. The semifinals are Friday, and the gold and bronze medal games are Saturday. I'd like to encourage everyone to get out and see a game. It is hard-hitting, it's fast, and it's terrific hockey. I'd also like to thank our staff and volunteers for all of their hard work and commitment, and for all of the sponsors and supporters of this event. Also, thank you to Hockey Canada. It has definitely shone another bright light on our community and our region. In keeping with the para athlete theme, I'd like to also congratulate international para cyclist Alex Hayward of QuisPamSis for his recent accomplishments at the Para Pan Am Games. Alex won two gold medals, one silver, and one bronze at the event in Chile. It is viewed as a preparatory competition ahead of the 2024 Para Olympic Games in Paris. Great job, Alexander, and thank you for representing your country, your community, and all of us with pride and distinction. Last month, I attended the Kennebukase's Regional Police Force annual awards and recognition ceremony. The force honored several members of long service and life-saving efforts, and recognized the spirit of civilian staff members. They also handed out special awards to members of the community who assisted police in the investigation and prevention of crime. Congratulations to everyone who participated, and thank you to the Kennebukase's Regional Police Force for continued excellence and service to our community. Last week, I, along with other members of the council, took part in the Union of Municipalities of New Brunswick. It's an organization that advocates for all municipalities in dealing with the province. The need for affordable housing and several other topics were among the items discussed. We had our first big snowfall of the season this week. So there are a few requests, such as please don't push the snow onto the road. For anyone using driveway markers, please place them back several feet from the side of your street or roads, so that our snow removal vehicles can do their jobs without damaging the markers, town equipment, or nearby vehicles. Any snow forts should be built away from the road to ensure safety from the snowplows. And for drivers, please be mindful of pedestrians at all times, but especially in areas without sidewalks. And finally, I would just like to thank everyone for joining us this year at the annual tree lighting ceremony at the Arts and Culture Park, and the annual KV Santa Claus parade. The spirit of the season was certainly evident at both events. I hope you enjoy our holiday dreamland and display throughout the holiday season. That is all of my remarks. Councillor Thompson?
On behalf of QuisPamSis Town Council and staff, I want to congratulate Mayor Libby O'Hara for being named the inaugural recipient of the Arthur Slip Municipal Leader of the Year Award. The award was presented during last week's Union of Municipalities of New Brunswick Conference. Congratulations, Your Worship.
Thank you very much. Looking now for disclosure of interests. There are none. Presentations. We have Envision St. John representative and CEO Andrew Beckett with us to discuss the regional growth strategy. So, Mr. Beckett, welcome.
Comments in terms of congratulations to all involved in the Para Hockey tournament that's underway. I had the pleasure of taking two of my grandkids on Friday night, and they thoroughly enjoyed it, and it was a great opportunity to expose them to that type of hockey, and it was extremely entertaining. It was a very great event to have in the local area. This evening, I wanted to walk through, is there a copy of my presentation to give to councillors? So, great. So I wanted to walk through a few things in relation to the work that we're doing as an agency, and really sort of reintroduce, I guess, some of the service areas that we're involved in. I assume from this that I can move this along. So what I wanted to start with is, over the past few months, we've been reviewing our operations. Changes in various people and various roles have given us an opportunity to take stock of, excuse me, the services that we offer, and take a look at what's working, what's not, and what maybe is missing in terms of what we're doing at the present time. So to start with, what we did was go back to the mandate that we were initially given by the municipal councils, and that identified the key service areas that we need to focus on. And I've provided in the presentation summaries of what those services are. So marketing and sales, people attraction, growth sector development, so looking at some key areas within the region that we're trying to grow moving forward, tourism development, entrepreneurship, the ecosystem, and supporting local entrepreneurs in various ways. A whole range of opportunities around data, and economic data, and really putting together a picture of the region from an economic standpoint. Looking at key aspects of economic infrastructure development, and I would say that in terms of stepping into this role, one of the things that I didn't expect to be spending so much time on is housing. It's probably the number-one area that we're focusing on over the next little while, that we've got a lot of people that want to live and work in this community, and housing's our big bottleneck at this point in time, so it's a file that we're spending a great deal of time on. And we also are here to support municipal, the municipalities, in terms of their economic development efforts as well. So I've broken down in the presentation some of the ways that that translates into the services that we deliver. So in terms of, we've got a destination marketing service, and that provides some of the more visible services that we offer. So the destination marketing, we do a lot of sales work. I know Lindsay Smith from our team has worked closely with your staff in terms of the Para Hockey and other sporting events that we're trying to promote the Qplex for. But we've got a sales team that's looking at attracting various different events and conventions, meetings to the local community. But then also, we're promoting, we've got a whole destination marketing campaign around attracting visitors to the region. We look for a lot of strategic partners in that area, and we're doing a lot of work in terms of promoting the region in different ways for visitors. I would say with this, though, that a lot of what gets lost at time, because we do that, there are tremendous resources for local residents as well. We've got a comprehensive events calendar on the destination marketing website that is great if you're somebody local that's just looking for something to do. The events calendar is a great quick reference for things that are going on around the region. There's also the opportunity to tailor some of your experience. If you're looking to go out to eat, you can tailor it based on your dietary preferences, and it'll give you a list of various and different restaurants in the area that you can go to. So great resources that I think local residents would benefit from, not just visitors. In terms of businesses, we do provide a variety of support for local businesses in terms of helping them review business plans, providing different navigation opportunities for them to help them access different supports that they need. We also provide an extensive number of one-on-one consultations for local entrepreneurs. On an annual basis, we're doing anywhere from one hundred and thirty to one hundred and fifty one-on-one meetings with local entrepreneurs to help them as they're going through the various stages in terms of their business development. And we, one of the common things that I've heard from talking to businesses that they appreciate is the resources we provide in terms of helping them navigate who they can contact and where to help them in terms of whether it's access to capital or different training opportunities that they need. And so we provide a lot of navigation supports for local businesses. In terms of the talent development inside, we've got, I would say, fair to say in today's terms, we're in an environment where there is a fierce competition for talent. And this is not only locally, this is nationally. Lifestyle quality of life are key components to attracting and retaining people. Things like the trail network that QuisPamSis has, the access to water that we've got locally and regionally, these are key features in terms of attracting people to an area like this, as we're trying to compete for the talent that we need to fill an extensive number of jobs that are available in the region. And that's where there's also a strong connection to our tourism work, that as we're promoting this area in terms of lifestyle and for visitors. On the population growth side, the big aspect of population growth is immigration. This is an area that we're spending quite a bit of time in terms of looking at how we welcome and embrace newcomers to our community. Immigration is absolutely critical in terms of the growth of our population in the region. The natural course of action in terms of population growth, births versus deaths, unfortunately is working against us. Our demographic would show that we've got more people dying than we do have births at this point in time. So immigration and migration, getting people from other parts of Canada moving here are key parts to our population growth strategy. So it's an area that we're spending a lot of time on. We're going to be launching a new online newcomer navigation guide very shortly that will, again, similar to the visitor guide, provide an opportunity for a newcomer to tailor what they're looking for and get specific resources to help them in terms of settling into our community. And then we're working with an extensive number of agencies and groups that are involved in welcoming people to our community and trying to bring them together to look at ways that we can better service newcomers to the community. Commercial, industrial, residential development, again, as I mentioned, housing is our big bottleneck to growth at this point in time. So we're doing a lot of work in this area, working with developers, looking at different ways that we can try and move projects forward. It's a tough climate for development at present. Interest rates are high, costs of construction have gone through the roof over the last couple of years. They're up about forty-five percent over the last three years. So it's a tough climate for developers in terms of trying to move projects forward. We held a session, it's about a month ago now, with local developers where we brought in manufactured home manufacturers, that are the four or five that are in the province, a chance to promote manufactured homes as one option that possibly could expedite some development. We had a great turnout at the session, and it was a good networking opportunity for the local developers, and we plan on doing more of that work to try and support the development community. And we're also doing a lot of advocacy work with the province right now to try and look at different ways and different incentives that can be put in place to promote some of the development that's taking place, because we know with the costs where they are, development is, we've got a lot of development that's stalled right now because of those costs. We've got a number, I didn't do a separate slide on it, but that's sort of the slides that I just went through are the sort of on-the-ground services that we deliver. But we've also got a number of growth initiatives that we're working on on a more general basis. So things like the integrated health setup at the University of New Brunswick, along with the Health and Technology Cluster that we're promoting there. A lot of work going on in regards to that, and I think that's moving ahead quite well. We think the first building for the Health and Technology Cluster will be, start construction next year. And that's a real differentiator for our region when we're looking at trying to promote and draw in healthcare professionals to the local area, having a medical school, some Health and Technology Cluster that's taking place, with research taking place there. And then the university putting a real focus on that integrated health program is a tremendous cluster to attract health professionals to the area, which really then helps in terms of attracting investment, in terms of other spinoffs that can come associated with that. So we're really pleased with that project. We're doing a lot of work with the Port of St. John, looking at the ways that we can optimize the local benefit from the increased amount of traffic that's currently coming through and projected to increase over the next number of years. So we're looking at a number of different opportunities to promote some development around that. And we'll continue our advocacy works on housing for the next year as well. So there's some general things. Internally, we'll be launching, actually, we're in the midst of launching regional economic development planning exercise to develop a regional economic development plan, and also a regional tourism master plan. And in probably about February or March of next year, we'll be starting a regional immigration plan as well. With each of these plans, there'll be a lot of opportunity for input from each of the municipal units, because we're not taking the approach that one size fits all. We want to make sure these plans reflect the individuality of the communities that are part of this region, because we think it's one of the strong selling features of the region, the fact that there are a variety of different options in terms of where people live and the types of communities that they're going to be part of. So there'll be, you can expect over the coming months to get a number of outreaches for input in terms of those planning processes. But we think those plans will be an opportunity to sort of connect the dots on a number of different initiatives that are underway to provide some real guidance in terms of what we're trying to promote as a region. In terms of the organization, we've done a bit of a realignment of roles and responsibilities within the organization to make it a little bit clearer who's doing what and who's responsible for different things. We've also had a couple of staff departures, which has given us the opportunity to realign some of the staffing, and we're putting more of a focus on frontline people that are going to be out in the field more, doing active engagement across the region. So we're introducing two to three development or growth coordinator positions that, again, will be more of an outreach exercise to get more engaged in the region. So I think you'll see some of those people more present in the various communities. We're trying to basically be more proactive rather than reactive. What we found over the last while, if people find us, we provide good services, but you have to find us. So we're trying to make it easier for people to find us by being out. And we're trying to do, we're doing a bit of work too in terms of the area of transparency and accountability. So we're building new key performance indicators for the organization from the ground up to have better measures, to show the type of work that we do, and so that we can show some accountability in relation to that. And we're also shifting around our budget to be a service-oriented budget, so that you can see in terms of the financial allocations how we've allocated money to those key service areas that we deliver. And again, we think that'll improve the transparency in terms of how we spend money. I provided in the presentation our most recent organization chart. Again, just to give you a sense of who's involved, when I went through all that range of services, we've got a lot of things on the go. We've only got seventeen people. They're very busy. I had a meeting with the team today, and I could say they're looking forward to the Christmas break, because at this point in time, they're all pretty tired. But they do an extensive amount of work on an ongoing basis, and they're a very engaged team in terms of trying to grow the region. But it does give you a sense in terms of who you can reach out to for the various different responsibilities we've got. With that, Your Worship, happy to take any questions that people may have in relation to our activities.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beckett. And certainly, you know, when we look at all of these files that are, that are used, I guess, or under the responsibility of the enterprise, it certainly is interesting when we look at the number of agencies that are working on the housing file, because I know we are working on it here. The region, under Regional Services Commission, is working on it. You are working on it under Envision, and of course, UMB, that was one of the hot items that they will advocate for, advocate for the entire province, for all the municipalities that were represented there. And of course, business attraction and economic development attraction, that is so important to our area, and to have the amenities within our communities that do attract people, and then for them to bring their businesses here, or to start up businesses, and to have an agency such as Envision that will sort of guide them along the way. So kudos to you for that. And certainly, we appreciate the work that the seventeen employees do that are on your org chart. And, you know, we support one another, and that's very important, that we recognize that as well. So, Councillor Bigger, please.
Thank you very much, Your Worship, and thank you, Mr. Beckett, for that presentation. Good to get a sense of what's current and what's happening within Envision, and a bit of a recalibrating there with a few things, so I appreciate that. I was taking note when you were talking about, as the mayor alludes to, the importance of housing, and how it seems like all discussions seem to lead there currently, no matter what group of people, you know, is getting together in the context of serving the greater community. And certainly, that's keenly felt here. And you had mentioned as well about immigration being very critical to population growth, that being a core value that you guys have, and we certainly share that. I was intrigued about the newcomer navigation guide. That sounds very interesting.
I think it'll be a useful tool.
Yeah, it sounds like a great tool, yeah, yeah. I just wanted to ask, I don't mean to put you on the spot, and maybe this is something you can't answer, but some weeks ago, Jeff was here, Jeff Seer. And he had spoken on the subject of housing, and he was speaking kind of specifically about the challenges, you know, facing the various municipalities in the greater St. John area related to demographic changes and structural needs and changes to accommodate housing as it's going forward, and trying to incentivize developers, and what obstacles there are to overcome there, and some recommendations. And he had alluded to in that meeting the idea that Envision would be perhaps contracting a consultant who would then be made available, his or her expertise would be made available to the various municipalities to be able to speak into the needs of those specific communities with a bit more expertise than Jeff claimed to have, although I thought he seemed pretty smart, frankly. But anyway, I just wondered if you could comment on that, because we haven't really heard back on anything on that, and it's just maybe a little too soon. But I just wondered if that rings true at all for you.
I suspect what he might have been talking about is the residential market study that we've got underway right now. That's one where we have engaged a third party on. And I'm not sure, Mr. Kennedy, if there's been outreach to you in terms of, from the consultant on that. I'll follow up with Jeff on it, because I know they're still working through that study, so it may be on their plan to finish off the outreach to the various municipal units. But we do have a residential market study that's underway. And that's really to sort of start getting at the heart of availability and affordability of houses. Unfortunately, we're in a time now where affordability for people to get housing is, it's, the gap is getting quite large. But I will follow up on that, just to make sure that there's outreach.
Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And yeah, that sounds like it would be very insightful. I know that one of the things that I'm really wanting to sort of hone in on in this discussion is trying to incentivize, like, overcome the hurdle of creating affordability within, let's say, a multi-rise, multi-unit building, mid-rise, multi-unit building, where you can somehow strike some kind of arrangement or agreement with a developer to make a certain, you know, X number of units, let's say, in an apartment complex, sort of be under some banner of affordability. And I mean, that's a bit of a subjective term, so it means different things to different people, and in different markets, it means different things, of course, too. But that is one of the things that, at the United Municipalities of New Brunswick Conference, there was a lot of discussion around kind of tips and tricks and best practices, and people were kind of, you know, thinking out loud, almost kind of brainstorming as we sat there in the seminars about ways to try to incentivize developers, and then how to maintain that commitment, assuming you can even achieve that. Who monitors that going forward, and how do you achieve that? So if you incentivize some GST rebate or something to a developer to, you know, apportion a number of units in a building to be made more affordable for the sake of people who are at risk or who are newcomers and are coming in, new entry into the economy, what have you, to the workforce? Who monitors that going forward, and what if the developer sells that building later? And then the next person says, well, I don't know anything about this arrangement, you know? So those are kind of sticky wickets, you know? And that's assuming you can incentivize a developer to even build the building in the first place, and streamline all of our zoning and our applications, bylaw processes. We're certainly looking at all that, you know? But anyway, that's, I just mentioned that, just to say, that's certainly very specifically one of the things that I think is really, you know, key.
Yeah, and I would assure you that our staff are very engaged in terms of looking at different alternatives, working with developers in terms of exploring alternatives. I would say at the outset, the problem, one of the biggest problems we've got, particularly, well, with all housing, but very much so in the rental side, is we've got a supply problem. but very much so in the rental side, is we've got a supply problem. That is, and, and if we had more rental units, prices would moderate for the, for the rent. But right now, we have a shortage of rental accommodations. So we're looking for ways to try and get more, more rental units on the market. We do a lot of work with the developers in terms of promoting the, the province's affordable, affordable housing programs. And that does then provide the developer with a contractual obligation to, to provide subsidized rents in, in units. So we've got, have a lot of those that we work through. But look, on an ongoing basis, we're looking for any and all different options going forward. It's, it's one of those areas. It's, it's very complex. And the more conversations we can have on it, the better, quite frankly, because it takes, it's going to take a lot of creativity to move forward.
Of rental spaces and no rent cap to make it affordable. So there's no protection really from gouging for renters who have nowhere else to go, frankly.
Where rent caps have been put in place, like Nova Scotia's got a rent cap, but it's 5% a year. I mean, I'm, I'm not sure many people living in homes would say 5% is a very, very good cap in, in terms of, so it's.
In the province, I read in the TJ last week was 8.42% or something like that. So.
And again, speaks to pricing and supply.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you very much for your presentation. I guess I got a couple of questions. You, you talked about there's been a lot of turnover. I see we've got four vacant positions, one, one posted position, and there's two directors with three vacant positions underneath them. So were those three vacated or have you just restructured everything?
They're, they're, those three growth coordinator positions are new positions. So we had, we had two vice presidents leave. And from my standpoint, I looked at it and said, I'd have, I'd like to have less people up top and more people in the field.
No, makes, makes sense.
So that's, that's a recent change and those positions are posted now. In fact, I think we're, I, I hesitate to look at the file because I, I think we're well over 100 applications for positions at this point in time.
Yep, exactly. Just two other questions or one's kind of a comment. We, we talk about housing assessment plans and strategies and we also talk about economic master plans and a whole bunch of things like that. You're speaking about that for Envision St. John. The towns are doing their own plans. I'm sure the Regional Service Commission is doing their own plans and the province is doing their plans. So my, my question is, how much are we overlapping and when, when do we stop overlapping? Because we seem to be adding a layer upon a layer upon a layer. And to me, it's a lot. Like if we go, we voted last, I wasn't here last meeting to do money in the budget for affordable housing. You were doing a housing assessment plan that, that we're paying for indirectly. And the province is doing stuff and we all know there's an issue. So where do we stop overlapping each other or how do we stop overlapping each other?
I, I think we as an agency can play a part in that in terms of helping with some of the overlaps. Like the residential market study, I think will feed into some of the work that's being done at each municipal unit side of things. And so we want to make sure that that data is available that comes out of those studies. With any of the studies that we're doing, we've made it clear in our request for proposals that the consultant has to make sure that all these plans do integrate and, and they take care of those overlaps. And so if something's already been done, we don't want to redo it. And so we'll be feeding off a lot of the plans that are already in place at the local level, at the provincial level. I would say at the regional level, the Regional Service Commission has actually contracted with us on this. So, so the, the regional economic development plan is being done by us, which will then be part of the funding Region Service Commission's core documents. Same with the tourism master plan, that that's, that becomes a, a document that we're doing under contract with the Regional Service Commission. But with all of our plans, I can assure you that we've, we've asked for proper integration with the local municipal units in terms of whatever they've got, in terms of provincial plans, whatever they have, and also federal plans in some cases. So we're trying to, to take care of those overlaps and avoid any sort of duplications along the way.
Makes, makes sense. Thank you. And kind of the last question, when we talk about events and things that go on, obviously we talked about the Qplex sledge hockey going on. But also, you know, we've done our own video about Quispam sis. So is there any interaction between Envision St. John and Quispam sis for those type of events? Or has there been in the past?
I, I think it would be fair to say, Mr. Kennedy, there's, there's an extensive amount of interaction. One of our staff has been on the planning committee for the para hockey as example. I think she was presenting awards after, after a few of the games and the like. And we're, we're a sponsor of the event as well. And when it comes to submitting bids, we provide bid submission support because we've got great templates, great supports for it. So yeah, we look for any opportunity we can to, to plug into any of those sorts of, sorts of things on an ongoing basis.
That's perfect. So that, that's all in public. So people know that we are also getting support from Envision St. John for events.
I think the message from my standpoint, we're an extension of the municipal units. That, that we're, we're, we're here to, to provide tools, resources that you may not be able to, to get other ways. And certainly in terms of the tourism marketing and destination marketing, we can provide access to markets that individually the municipal units wouldn't be able to do. But, but we, with everything we do, we recognize we are an extension of the municipal units. We're here to make sure that we're servicing and, and adding, adding value where we can to the municipal units in the region.
Thank you, Your Worship. It may sound like hyperbole to say that we wouldn't be able to pull off these events without the assistance of Envision St. John, but it's not. We wouldn't be able to pull off these events without the assistance of Envision St. John. Throughout this whole process is, I've talked about how we're on a, a journey with Hockey Canada. And this is the fourth event that we've been able to host here. And Andrew made reference to the support that we received from his team. And I probably bother them more than they deserve at times because not only are we focusing this week on the Para Hockey Cup that's happening, we're already focused on the next event because these things don't just stop. They don't operate in, in silos. So we are in constant communication with our partners at Hockey Canada and Hockey New Brunswick, Canada and Envision, hoping to land that next event. And there are discussions actually ongoing this week with some of the Hockey Canada brass who are in attendance this week. So their support to this municipality specifically, is the only one that I can speak of, has been invaluable throughout this whole process. And it's not an exaggeration to say that without the support of Envision, Your Worship, these Hockey Canada events would not be taking place in our community.
Thank you. We will move now to Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Mr. Beckett, for your presentation. There is a lot. There's a lot of moving parts going on in Envision St. John. So it's hard to decide which one you want to ask a question on. But I'm going to zoom in on the entrepreneurs. Because years ago, of course, Economic Development Corporation was to develop the entrepreneurs and bring them along. And I guess from a standpoint of an entrepreneur in Quispam sis, you alluded to, once they find you, it's okay. It's finding you or knowing that you exist.
That's right.
So I guess my question is, is how are we going to move forward that we know that you exist for entrepreneurs in Quispam sis that are looking at it? And the second question I would have is, how do we extract that data at the end of the year to see what, how many people in Quispam sis entrepreneurs were helped? Or are you doing that or is it just a regional, total regional number? Because sometimes when you're referring to, referring, having some answers for the taxpayers and you're talking about things, it's nice to be able to have that, that data to say, you know, the Envision St. John was able to help with this, like Para, the Qplex, for example. That's a great example. But what else is there? I guess my question is.
And, and we can, we can try and do a little bit of that. And I, I hesitate a little bit in terms of breaking down by municipal units, some of the things that we do. Because part of it in terms of when you're trying to promote a, a strong business climate, we're, we're doing it more generally and then how it plays out in each municipal unit can be, can be a little difficult to track. Plus you have problems with, people may live in one municipal area, but they have businesses in another. So we have all kinds of crossovers. But, but I think we can capture a bit more information in terms of the, the entrepreneurs that we're supporting and, and do a bit of a geographic breakdown on it. And I would say that, you know, part of this is even presenting tonight to, to highlight that that's a service that we offer is hopefully a way to, to start getting the word out to people. We're going to be doing a lot more promotion of those services when we've got those positions filled. And we're going to have people out in the field more. So instead of just waiting for the phone to ring, we want people going out and interacting with businesses in various areas. This is a community that works well with word of mouth. We think that once we get people out and doing a bit of this, that, that word will spread and, and that we'll, we'll be able to do it. So I, I'm certainly hopeful over the next six, eight months as we get those positions filled and, and trained and, and get the people out in the field that, that will be able to, to provide even more support and benefit to the, to the local entrepreneurs. Because we know in terms of growing our economy, probably 60, 70, maybe even as much as 80%, of it's going to come from local entrepreneurs, those that, that are adding five jobs here, 10 jobs there. You know, this is, the economic development game is a lot of singles, quite a few foul balls and occasionally you get a home run. But it's, it's those singles and doubles that add up over time. And that's what we want to be focused on with our small and medium sized businesses to, to, to help them along the way in terms of their growth journey.
Thank you. Did you have a follow up, Deputy Mayor?
I just wanted to comment on that with the entrepreneurs. And I'm, I'm glad to mention that, that, you know, the home run is the big 500 jobs. The entrepreneurs, I mean, if every business in New Brunswick hired one employee, there's 50,000 jobs. So we don't give the credit due where the credit should be to the small business. In my, in my mind, sometimes, you know, it's all the, the IT and the poor, and the high, like the really, it's big and important and I'm not taking anything away from it. But the boots on the ground, so to speak, are the entrepreneurs and they're the ones that are paying a big taxes and running small business every day. So, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Mr. Beckett, for your report. It's good to see progress being made. There's a lot of balls being juggled in the air. And the more balls that are juggled in the area by Envision, municipalities, provincial government, federal government, some of them have got to be caught when they're coming down. So I'm looking for, I'm, I'm a big supporter of Envision. I believe that it has a place in our community's development. And working as a region, I think we're stronger. And I just wish you luck in keeping your employees and finding the ones that you're looking for. And you should find some, one or two good ones out of the 100 applications.
I suspect so. Look, I think the region's very fortunate. We've got, we've got a very strong team. And I think Mr. Kennedy can attest to that in terms of his interactions. These are, these are individuals that are extremely engaged in the work that they do and, and working for the region. And yeah, I, I'm hoping that we're going to get some really good people to add to that team.
I wonder, I wonder if any of them can swing a hammer. They're looking for tradespeople real bad too, you know? That's holding up projects, I'm sure.
Sure is. That's right. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Counselor Olson, were you moving that? Thank you for.
Yes.
You did thank him at the beginning? Moved by Counselor Olson?
Yes. We'd like to thank Andrew Beckett for his presentation updating council on Envision St. John's roles and responsibilities and their destination marketing positioning in the region as the destination of choice in the Maritimes. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Bigger on the question. Please vote now.
I will say while you're away, Your Worship, that we will be having an annual general meeting in spring that will send invitations out. It'll be a chance for members of council to ask more, more in-depth questions in terms of some of the areas and hear some presentations on it. And I look forward to having the opportunity at least a couple of times a year to come back and provide regular updates to council on, on the different activities that we're involved in.
Thank you very much. Motion carried unanimously. And certainly we, we do hear from the RSC as well, from CEO Phil Wallett, who, who also oversees the Envision files. So thank you very much for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to you. Moving on to item number six, public hearings. 29 Pettingill Road rezoning application, Pettingill Dental, Neighborhood Commercial to Central Commercial. And in attendance, we have Dr. Jeffrey Morrison, if you'd like to come forward. Good evening, Dr. Morrison. I'm just going to read the public hearing procedure. So I'd like to acknowledge, along with council, that we have been requested to and plan to consider amending municipal plan number 054 and/or zoning bylaw number 038, or 38, sorry. Today has been set as a day and a place for a public hearing and that we note that anyone wishing to speak for or against the proposed bylaw amendment will be heard and considered by council. Each person wishing to speak will approach the podium, identify themselves and have a five-minute timeline to address council. So first, we would have planning staff to provide executive summary, which we have done. Presentations by the proponent. Those wishing to speak for or against the proposal shall be given the opportunity to be heard. I will ask three times if anyone further wishes to speak for or against the proposed amendments. Then you would make your final summation. PAC's written reviews are noted and council members may ask questions and a motion may be presented and voted upon. So if you'd like to add anything to the, to the request?
No, just I'd be happy to answer any questions or, you know? And again, I just want to reiterate, as I've said before, that this, this is intended not to, to make any changes. We're, we're just trying to put things correct on paper. We're not looking to, there'd be no perceivable difference going forward as there is right now. So.
Thank you. I will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak for or against the proposed amendment. I will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak for or against the proposed amendment. And third and final time, if there is anyone wishing to speak for or against the proposed amendment. There are none. PAC's written reviews, or views are noted. Do we have to read those? No, we're good. And if council has any questions, this would be the time. Counselor Olson.
Your Worship, if it's, if it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion.
Certainly.
I'd move first reading be given to zoning bylaw number 3847, rezoning PID number 30207096.29, Pettingill Road, from Neighborhood Commercial to Central Commercial in order to match the correct zoning for the higher number of employees currently working in the dental clinic.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. There are none. Please vote now. Motion carried, 6-0. Item two. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd move second reading to be given to zoning bylaw number 038-47, rezoning PID number 30207096, 29 Pettingill Road, from Neighborhood Commercial to Central Commercial in order to match the correct zoning for the higher number of employees currently working at the dental clinic.
It's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. There are none. Please vote now. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Thank you all.
Item number seven A. November 17th, 2023, regular meeting. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you. I'd move that those minutes be approved as prepared.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Your Worship. I wasn't here, so I appreciate all the votes that went through. I will just be voting no because I would have voted no for the changes in the budget. So I just want that noted. I wasn't here to vote. So that's why I'll have a no here. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Counselor Miller. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, five-one, with the nay vote from Counselor Miller because of his absence at our previous meeting. And on to item number eight, unfinished business. October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, the twenty-twenty-four General Operating Fund Budget Rounding Adjustment Staff Report from Town Treasurer. And you had that in your report. There's a motion there. Counselor Olson.
Yes, Your Worship. Based on the staff report from the town treasurer, read the rounding adjustment, seven-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. The previously adopted twenty-twenty-four General Operating Fund Budget Motion of November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three be amended to read as followed. Resolve that the sum of thirty-four million, five-hundred-and-seven-thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars be the total operating budget of the municipalities, that the sum of thirty-two million, five-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars be the warrant of the municipality for the ensuing year, and that the residential tax rate for the municipality be one-point-two-seven-seven-seven, and that the non-residential tax rate be two-point-one-seven-two-one.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Bigger on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion carried unanimously. Moving on to item number nine A, correspondence. Quispemcys Memorial Arena Properties, three-fifty Hampton Road, administrative correction to zoning map, annexed to zoning bylaw number zero-three-eight, staff report from Planning and Development Services Manager. Counselor Bigger.
Yes, Your Worship. I would move that council authorize the town of Quispemcys Planning and Development Services Department through the Development Officer to correct color coding error in zoning bylaw zero-three-eight map for PID numbers two-five-zero-seven-zero-four and two-five-zero-seven-one-two, with the color coding change being from Park and Recreation to Municipal Recreation Commercial, MRC-dash-InST. That's corrected. I don't have my glasses on. Being the zoning designation established for lands in zoning bylaw zero-one-four and brought forward to zoning bylaw zero-three-eight.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Olson on the question. There are none. Please vote now. Motion carried unanimously. Item number ten, bylaws. Ten A, proposed stop-up and close, bylaw number zero-six-five, a bylaw to stop up and close a portion of Cedar Grove Drive, Public Street, Right-of-Way, consideration of third and final reading. Counselor Miller.
Your Worship, just on the question, was this done in public last time? If it was, I can't do the third reading. Was this a public hearing last time? I don't, it wasn't a public hearing, right? Or was it?
The public hearing was...
I don't have it here.
The last, because this was at the last meeting?
Yeah, let me just check those minutes. It's either that one or the one before.
Yeah. Yeah, the...
It was the last one, I'm pretty sure.
It was two weeks ago, so November nineteenth. That's what I thought, because, thank you for that.
It was the last one.
Yep. All right. All right. Counselor Donovan.
I would move that whereas a notice has been published on the town of Quispemcys website pursuant to section fifteen-three and fifteen-four of the Local Governance Act, and whereas bylaw number zero-sixty-five, a bylaw to stop up and close permanently a portion of Cedar Grove Drive, Street, Right-of-Way, received first and second reading at the November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting. Now therefore be it resolved, council give third and final reading to the proposed stop-up and close bylaw number zero-six-five, a bylaw to stop up and close a portion of Cedar Grove Drive, Public Street, Right-of-Way.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Deputy Mayor Skryer on the question. There are none. Please vote now. Motion carried, five-zero. Thank you. And item number B, proposed sewage utility bylaw amendment number zero-five-dash-twenty-four, bylaw respecting sewage utility. Counselor Olson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Whereas a notice has been published on the town of Quispemcys website pursuant to section fifteen-three and fifteen-four of the Local Governance Act, and whereas the sewage utility bylaw amendment number zero-zero-five-dash-two-four received first and second reading at the November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting. Now therefore be it resolved, council give third and final reading to the sewage utility bylaw amendment number zero-zero-five-dash-two-four to increase the annual sewage utility rate by three-point-nine-three percent, or twenty-one dollars from five-thirty-four per equivalent user to five-fifty-five per equivalent user.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Bigger on the question. There are none. Please vote now. Motion carried, five-zero. Somebody not vote?
Oh, Kirk.
Oh, Counselor.
No, Kirk is here.
Lisa, who's voted in favor?
Okay. Motion carried, six-zero. Thank you. Item number ten C, bylaws. Counselor Olson.
Whereas a notice has been published on the town of Quispemcys website pursuant to section fifteen-three and fifteen-four of the Local Governance Act, and whereas the water utility bylaw amendment number zero-two-four-nineteen received first and second reading at the New Brunswick, New Brunswick, November, let me start again there, twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting. Now therefore be it resolved, council give third and final reading to water utility bylaw amendment number zero-two-four-dash-nineteen to increase the water user fee fixed charge component by three-point-eight-eight percent, with the basic rate going from two-dollar, two-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars to two-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars annually, with larger meters increasing by three-point-eight-eight percent. The water user fee consumption rate component up to ninety-six cubic meters per quarter to increase by four percent from one-point-oh-five-two-five to one-point-oh-nine-four-six percent per cubic meter, and the second level usage charge to increase from one-point-six-six-six-eight to one-point-seven-three-three-five per cubic meter, four percent.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Bigger on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, six-zero. Thank you. Item number eleven, new business, Provincial Municipal Highway Partnership Program, four-year plan, twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-eight, requires resolution of council. Director of Engineering and Works will provide additional information. And, Mr. Loge, Director of Engineering and...
Your Worship, my apologies for having this to council today. It was an application in flux last week prior to the council deadline. The Department of Transportation has introduced a new program for not next year, but the subsequent year. So from twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-eight, they've introduced a Provincial Municipal Highways Partnership Program, which is a lovely phrase for them to use. Essentially, what they're looking at is the way that they identify priorities for the designated highways program. They've asked for a more extensive breakdown of projected costs that a municipality would see for any of the related roadways within the municipality that fall under the jurisdiction. And then what they will do is they've asked communities to then break down overall project costs into what they consider to be eligible and non-eligible funding opportunities. So when we had made our application, or when we're doing the review under the Housing Assistance Program, the fund, the Accelerator Fund, we had identified that the Hampton Road would be a prime candidate for infrastructure upgrades, and we were waiting on some estimates from the initial reporting to be able to complete the DTI applications. They want the applications this fall, so we had to complete these and get a resolution of council, so we had to prepare some of the package information based on what we know so far. So with respect to the Hampton Road, we've made the initial assumption that the council's priority, which has been identified for the Housing Accelerator Fund program, is to complete the water main installation from the, where it stopped up around Pinewood Drive down into the Pettingill Road intersection around the RBC, the Rossay Boundary. We structured a costing estimate for that basis with allowance for not only water main construction, but whatever the incidental infrastructure work that may occur as a result. So that would mean we recognize that council is looking for an updated active transportation network down along the Hampton Road. We will look to improve the traffic in that particular area with rain, lane realignments. Likely will involve some resetting of sidewalk curb and gutter for street widths. The potential for streetscape work in that area, it translates into a project that we've estimated in the range of about seven-point-three million dollars. Now, when we break that down, and you'll probably see in the package I've submitted to council this evening, there are a few costs that the DTI will look at, what they consider as being eligible and non-eligible. So anything that's within the paved surface that would be associated with resurfacing, they would consider as eligible. If it's something that might be curb and gutter-related, they may consider some of that eligible. The water main is not eligible for DTI consideration. Anything that takes it beyond the existing width would not be eligible, so streetscape would not be. Some portions of active transportation may be eligible, but in this particular situation, where we may be expanding beyond the current curb-to-curb width, those are not considered eligible. So I had a little bit of a discussion with the DTI reps last week to make sure that we had a properly formatted application. And so you see the package that we've got before us this evening. The initial package was prepared with no municipal contribution. And we've had done that in the past, in previous years, when we've made application to designated highway, that there was an allowance, that we could make an application with an allowance, and we hadn't done any. Quite frankly, it wasn't as urgent. There was no need to see a pressing need to pull some of these streets ahead. In discussions, what they've indicated is that they have received some applications with no funding proposed. They have received some with cost-sharing proposed. My impression is the ones that have identified a cost-sharing component have a higher chance of success than the ones that don't have a costing, cost-sharing proposal. As a town, we fall in the range of fifteen to twenty-five percent of eligible sharing. So what I've done is I've prepared a package that shows a fifteen percent contribution annually to the DTI, to the designated highway program, of the eligible items, and prepared the document accordingly. The thing to remember is that in doing so, we've done two things now. On paper at least, we've committed part of our street capital program in future years, from twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, to this program. So it'll be pre-authorized or pre-expended monies theoretically. Again, it exists on paper. We haven't spent anything, but it's a commitment that we've made. Secondly, if you link not just the street paving work, but we're also looking at infrastructure work, which means it also links us to make some level of commitment towards continued work on active transportation, streetscape, any infrastructure that's missing water, things like that. So it's a comprehensive look at what we want to do on the Hampton Road over the next five years. However, it's the format that DTI wishes to see now. I'm sure that if next year or the, and subsequent years, we maybe may not have received whatever, say, accelerating funding that we had, or gas tax that's not linked to it, they would probably allow us to judge, to budge years from year to year, and that would be done at that time of application, like each subsequent year as we move forward. But for now, this is what they want to see. What are our plans going forward for twenty-five, six, seven, and eight? And what types of commitments we want to make, and what type of money we're willing to put up if that's the case. So, you know, it is council's prerogative to decide, you know, is it a fifteen percent contribution? Are we happy with that? Is it more? Or do we have the option to actually just say, no, we'll submit it as it is? I feel that, you know, it is, you know, looking, listening to council and the strategies that you've put forward and the priorities that you've identified, that I thought that a fifteen percent contribution was reasonable. It is in line with what most towns are proposing at this time, is my understanding. And at this stage, we do not have a firm decision with respect to our housing accelerator funding model. So it's, again, in twenty-twenty-five, we're still two years away. Whether it occurs, we'll see. But at this stage, we have these types of numbers in place. With respect to the design, I know Counselor Luck had some questions with respect to our plans for AT. If you recall, we've made that application, or we'll be putting an RFP out for infrastructure design and consideration for the Hampton Road, which will then determine what we want to see for AT design and things like allowances, and whether it's a dedicated sidewalk, or a trail, or offset trail, things of that nature, bicycle lanes. So we're not committing to an AT component at this stage, so it's something that we can do, and it'll come back before council for a final approval on with respect to the design. So we're not committing to actual things on the ground just yet. It's conceptual. It is financial in nature in that we have to take this into consideration in next October, particularly if we get the housing accelerator funds. So it is a lot to digest. It was, like I said last week, it was, as I investigated it more, it was an announcement by the province that sort of slid rather quietly, nonchalantly, but when we actually inquired as to, you know, what format they wanted to have and what's the implications, payment a little bit more clear that they are putting a lot of weight on the format that we've prepared in our proposal to include a municipal contribution. So that's the quick and dirty. And again, my apologies for having the report just today. It was one I wanted to make sure we had all the information for council before we went forward. So I appreciate if anyone has specific questions, I can help them out.
Thank you, Mr. Loge. Deputy Mayor Skryer, please.
Through you to Mr. Loge. Thank you for this. Mr. Loge, I just, I have a couple of questions, Your Worship. First is on the, when we're talking about Palmer Brook, that two thousand and twenty-six, I guess that is. It says year two thousand and twenty-six on it, right? Schedule A?
Schedule A.
Year two thousand...
Six is the, that's the Palmer Brook to the Hammond River Bridge.
Right.
That's the second, so this summer, as Counselor Thompson mentioned, is we're doing from the off-ramps to the intersection of the Route one hundred.
Right.
So we propose for twenty-six, after the accelerated funding year, we would go then finish out towards Hampton River, Hammond River Road Boundary. That's correct.
So I guess my question is sort of generic, and it has to do with safety.
Yes.
And I know we, a few years ago, council, you put in the roundabout out on the arterial, and we've had lots of discussions about Millennium and Hampton Road. And of course, we've talked about going out under the train bridge out the Hampton Road to Palmer, that meets at Palmer Brook. So what level of importance, or if you did a scale of one to ten, does the... does the province say, okay, yes, you're absolutely right, we need lights at the corner going on to the Palmer Brook Road? And we will allow you to put that in because there's, what I can see, there's nothing for safety measures besides like having sidewalks and trails obviously are important. But I mean, I'm sort of looking, where can we where can we incorporate that? And that's why I wouldn't want to increase the fifteen percent. Because if we're gonna have to come up with that money to put that in, I wouldn't want to have said, well, twenty-five percent. And can we incorporate it and leave it at the fifteen percent?
Through your worship, with respect to the Palmer Brook Road, the DTI initially places the most importance on road conditions and road surface, so asphalt paving, things like that. If we bring traffic, safety issues like traffic lights, then they want to see a traffic warrant analysis, which is where you took take traffic volumes and other accidents, those types of things. And you see an engineering rationale for that. You're correct in that we've had a couple of requests for that intersection. And the initial warrants that we have done, they do not meet the criteria to have traffic lights at that particular intersection at this stage. What we're hoping to see is that by giving us that year, we'll have the ability to to do just to do another quick analysis, bring it up, revise this in next year's application, for example, so that it includes traffic signals, it has the warrants that meets it. But but right now, it doesn't meet it. If we wanted to put them in at our at our costs, traffic lights at that particular intersection, because it's it's so close to the the brook, you wouldn't have enough space to put in a a circle unless we took land on the inside, like up against the Crowley property there, the former Crowley property. But traffic lights as a rule are in that three hundred twenty-five, four hundred thousand dollar range at that type of an intersection. So we we could add it at our cost, but I think where it's where it's still twenty-six is what is this, twenty-three, twenty-four, three, two and a half, three years away? I would suggest that we just keep continuing to monitor it, and then if it comes, we include it in our revised package, the next application round.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier and Mr. Lozier. Councilor Olson, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. One of my note down here that we've received the information late, as you've referred to, Mr. Lozier. And I would have appreciated a longer upfront time to discuss some of these issues that I was just looking at. I guess my first impression, Palmer Brook Road, it's twenty twenty-four, earmark twenty twenty-four, municipal contribution zero dollars. Does that mean that nothing's being done this year?
Through your worship, the DTI has already approved four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the Palmer Brook Road next next construction season. And so we they've they've advised us that there is money coming to us from their designated highway program under its old format. They they gave that to us. They announced that last year that their plan was to in two thousand and twenty-four to provide four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the Palmer Brook Road. The the way that this program works, the old program, was that we would then include the Palmer Brook Road in our street paving program, tender it out under our tender, and then they would reimburse us the cost of the Palmer Brook Road to up to four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. When we've prepared our budgets, our estimates at this stage, based on what we've seen, is about six hundred thousand dollars to do the work. So as as you can see in part of the Schedule A, we've identified a shortfall that 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 is required in order to include this in the twenty-four Street Capital Program. Now, their department has advised us that they recognize that this was done in two thousand and twenty-two, the estimates, and that they are providing allowances to communities for twenty twenty-four dollars. They haven't given us an exact amount, but what what I want to do is at least give them an an overview where we see the the estimates being placed at this stage. So so there is some additional funds coming. They haven't identified for us yet. And so it is, but it is, has been approved for consideration if we want to include it in our Street Capital Program for twenty twenty-four. And and we've we've made those allowances in our in our design packages and our staffing levels that we can include. It's basically going to be milling and paving and and because it's it's a it's a straight straight shoulder work. So it should be relatively straightforward, so we're hoping to see some 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 ease of incorporation into our program.
So that money was approved?
In two thousand and twenty-two.
In twenty-two?
Yes.
And there's no way that that money can be reallocated in twenty-four to the Hampton Road?
Um, we 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 don't have a specific plan for twenty twenty-four. I I do not think that we would be have have our Hampton Road Infrastructure Assessment Report, Design, any of that information done in time to 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 get into a proper construction season in twenty twenty-four for anything useful on the Hampton Road that we want to see. So I think this is a this is a it's a valuable, it's a high it's a high corridor, high-use corridor. I think it's very appropriate that we have the monies in twenty-four for that particular street. And I think the exercise that council has has directed staff to take with respect to getting ready for water on the Hampton Road is it's the appropriate one that will see us hopefully take advantage of this in twenty twenty-five.
I guess it's a it's a little bit disappointing in that we're another year back on the on that section of the road that we're trying to upgrade and that. And personally, I I guess I'm putting a higher priority on the Hampton Road, the lower end of it, towards the Rossay Border versus the Palmer Brook, but we're held to that because of pre-approved monies from the province.
Through your worship, if it was strictly paving, definitely, yes, we would look to see if we can adjust that. But but, you know, council has taken a strategic strategic position that we want to put water down, adjust active transportation, streetscape, and really, I don't think we want to be paving anything and then digging it all up to put water down. So this is, you know, this is was the strategic approach that we're taking is is to wait until we get the definitive wording on the Housing Accelerator Fund. Apply that towards the infrastructure in the ground, whether it's gas tax or Canadian Building Fund, whatever they call it these days. That can go in the ground, and we can leverage a big project, and then they get the DTI to incorporate paving as part of their contribution. And I think they themselves, this is the approach that they'd rather see. They'd rather see a all-encompassing, sort of a comprehensive approach when it comes to street development. And and that's why they've identified this new format for their application program, Your Worship.
So twenty twenty-five, we should see a lot of activity in the Hampton?
Twenty twenty-five, if I was a betting person, if I was a driving person and we got all this money, I would be walking, no, no driving on the Hampton Road for a long time.
I'd like to hear that.
You want to be taking the side roads all the way around, because that stretch of Hampton Road is not going to be passable.
Okay. No, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Olson. Councilor Bigger, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I was just thinking about that I was just thinking that at the AGM for United Municipalities New Brunswick, we ratified a resolution, didn't we, going up to the province that was introduced, I believe, by Grand Bay Westfield about recalculating a more equitable per kilometer rate of funding for provincially mandated highways or, you know, municipal highways, coming back into the communities. And so in an effort to try to create more predictable and stable of funding that's equitable is, of course, one kilometer of a provincial highway in a more rural region isn't the same animal really as dealing with one in a more urban or developed setting. And and I don't know if if I don't know if this plan seeks to somehow get in front of that by virtue of the province. It's it comes, it does arrive late. It certainly does. But I just wanted to, I guess, take note of the as you mentioned here in the report, Mr. Lozier, the on page two, I guess it's the second paragraph down, it says a fifteen percent contribution will require the town to commit a portion of its street capital budget each year to invest in an asset not actually owned by the town. This partial offload of expense by the province would see communities more and more responsible for long-term capital costs. And I think in that way, it does portend a troubling trend of the province just yet again downloading onto municipalities responsibility, creating an obligation on our part to measure up to a dictate from the province on how we manage something like this. And I appreciate that the funding comes from the province toward it, but it's just feels a little bit, again, like a loss of autonomy and control over. I'm all for strategizing, of course, and I don't see anything in this that other than, as Councilor Olson points out, we all have our wish list, and we're all eager to see Hampton Road get rebuilt and have the full streetscape, the full meal deal, as you point out. I'm eager for that. But anyway, I just point that out. I did want to just ask, in reference to the streetscape consultation process that has to occur and whatnot, that'll be, I don't know how, I just wondered how this speaks or how this informs that process from your perspective. I'd be interested to hear your thoughts about that. Does it does it play in at all from your perspective on, you know, how soon this can happen and what our strategy, how it might change? If we take fifteen percent of our street budget and it's not, and we have to apply it elsewhere, for example. Anyway, I just would love to hear your thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. This, as I as I mentioned a little earlier, is is the is the concept of leveraging provincial funds to add to what we plan for a a comprehensive approach to the Hampton Road. So the Hampton Road, if I think the driver will be the infrastructure analysis and the overview that we're having the consultants perform in the new year and the new capital program. That will then take into the, not just the the paving as it as the DTI is concerned with, but also things, as I mentioned, that Councilor Luck brings up quite often with respect to AT. Is it a dedicated trail? Is it a bike lane? But also streetscape, the the decorative lights that we have down in front of the malls and and that area, should that be carried up further? Do you want further opportunities for benches, rest areas, things of that nature? So I think that's the comprehensive look that that's that's going to be driven by the consultant's review in the in the spring and in the summer. What that does then is it, we've we've taken similar projects, base our best guess to come up with that seven point three, seven point four million dollar cost in order to make the application to DTI. I would imagine that if in this, at the end of the summer, the the consultant comes back and says, listen, you're closer to a ten million dollar project. What we would then look at is what components of that ten million dollar project are considered eligible and when they're not eligible. I would imagine if we get into a higher requirement for streetscape, DTI is not going to contribute to streetscape. The pavement width is the pavement width is the pavement width. So quite frankly, they're going to say, well, whether you do, you know, the full meal deal now and and but we're only paving thirty-two feet asphalt, and what do you have beyond that thirty-two feet? That's on your nickel. So that becomes the question of of the municipality. How far do we want to get into the borrowing? How far do we want to get into commitment of other capital programs so that we're making this this asset the way we want, you know, outside of that? So I think the exercise from this application is is not going to impact the DTI level of funding so much as it will the town's own commitment after the fact when it comes to how how big of a, what kind of a streetscape do we want to see? What kind of commitments do we want to make to that infrastructure beyond just straight blacktop, so to speak? I don't know if that that answers your question? Okay.
Thank you, Councilor Bigger.
I do you have another light lit? I was, I'm prepared to make a motion if.
Go ahead and make a motion.
I would move that the document entitled Town Equus Pam Sis Four-Year Plan for the PMHP Program, two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-eight be adopted.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilor Bigger, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier. Deputy Mayor, did you have a on the question? Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I I just wanted to have clarification. So this application would tie us to a fif- if a fifteen percent funding. And I'm just wondering if that's really what, if council wants to do that, if they want to say, yeah, we're up for fifteen percent? Or do you want to go ten percent or?
As as Your Worship through you, as as a town, our contribution limits are stipulated by the province, fifteen percent to twenty-five percent.
Oh, it has to be fifteen percent.
If we're a village, it would be lower. If it's a village, it would be lower. It's a city, it's higher ranges. But the minimum contribution that the town can make is fifteen percent, and that's why I chose that. But so the question essentially is, is it zero or the minimum contribution to be considered? And we can pick and select years if we want, but I figured, you know, we've made that commitment. I think it's probably appropriate to to demonstrate to the province that we're ready to do this. As Councilor Olson has said, the Hampton Road has been neglected for quite a long time, and it's always been with the premise that we really don't want to do anything on the Hampton Road until we put water, until we develop the infrastructure appropriately. That time is now, and I think we should make that that known to the province that we're ready to roll. And when the time comes, the 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 holes are going to be on the Hampton Road.
Okay, and I just had one final question, and it had to do with the Palmer Brook Road again. So we we're we're saying your projection right now is six hundred thousand? And the province was had four?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, put aside for us. We don't know what they're going to give us. So my question is, where will that shortfall come from?
Through your worship, where we control the the asphalt tender? And when it comes out, I would I would, my initial approach would be, we would pave as far as as whatever they give us, takes us. And it may not take us as far as we want. And then we'll just add what wasn't what wasn't done to the next application. But we will then be better positioned once we know what their funding level is and what the tender tenders come in at. We can make a more accurate decision. Again, to Councilor Bigger's point or Councilor Emma's point, that maybe equate to, you know, pseudo fifteen percent contribution on a project is that we make up that difference, and all of a sudden, we're doing it backdoor because we we want to see it done. But I think the 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 key in that particular area is going to be the intersection of the Elliott and the Hampton Road. That's an area that council has received some some inquiries on, some concerns on. I was, I went by it today just as a, just to to check on something. And it needs some site distance work, trees cut, things like that. There's a lot of hazardous areas that are in that stretch of work that we need to be doing.
Thank you. I'm just wondering on the question if we should be including the fifteen percent. Would you like to go ahead with that, Councilor Bigger? It was your motion?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I I guess the motion generally speaks to being to adopting the document as prepared, and I was just going to inquire if it, the document, I think, I don't know if outright states that we should be moving ahead with a fifteen percent commitment. I mean, certainly as compared to a twenty-five percent, I think that that's, you know.
I think it should be noted.
The motion should state that. So I would I would request that we amend the motion in that regard and add the fifteen percent contribution so that it's sort of overtly, you know, apparent in the in the motion. Maybe the clerk could help with the language on that.
And Deputy Mayor Schreier, you're okay with this change? Thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Bigger.
Through you, over to our Director of Engineering and Works. You mentioned, did I understand you correctly, that that fifteen percent figure could be changed, you know, next year or the year after or what have you, that it can move about a little bit?
Yes, Your Worship, this application obviously is is two years away, twenty twenty-five. They're going to, so I would imagine it's going to impact that twenty twenty-five program. Beyond that, if council finds themselves in a position to say, yeah, we're not as urgently thinking that we have to do this, we're going to have a zero contribution. Or in our discussions with the province, they say, listen, you've got, you've made significant contributions in your other years, this year doesn't need one. But it can, you know, it because it's there now, it doesn't necessarily mean it has to be there in in subsequent applications in the future, I would imagine. I I can't see them holding us to a plan now, especially if they ask us, if they said, this is it, this is your only application of twenty twenty-eight, where they're going to make us reapply every year. I think we can change our priorities and our contribution levels accordingly if we wish.
So with that in mind, not to be too much of a stickler here about words, but should should we perhaps, you know, reflect that in the language of the motion by use of a phrase like an initial contribution level? You know, to be reviewed or renewed or what have you or?
In their in their forms, they they look for a specific format for the resolution, and it doesn't necessarily. I think they recognize the fact that this is an annual application. I don't think they're going to hold communities. So I think the the motion as proposed shows that even if you stipulate, even if you stipulate the fifteen to fifteen percent contribution in in the year twenty twenty-five, you know, that that would be plenty, but beyond that, I don't think it's going to make much difference, quite frankly. I think I think if it's even the resolution to 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 adopt the provincial highway municipal, provincial municipal highway program partnership plan as indicated with a fifty percent contribution in the year twenty twenty-five, and then just leave it at that.
Okay, I'll ask the clerk to adjust that.
So just to flag out in year twenty twenty-five with the fifteen percent?
Yes. Would you like to read out the?
Moved by Councilor Bigger, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier, that the document entitled Moved by councillor Bigger, seconded by deputy mayor Skryer, that the document entitled Town of Quispam Sis. Four-year plan for the P M H P program, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight. Be adopted acknowledging the fifteen percent municipal contribution in year twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. On the question, it's been moved by councillor Bigger, seconded by deputy mayor Skryer. Please vote now. Motion carried six-zero. Item number twelve, reports. Councillor Olson. Thank you. Moved by councillor Olson, seconded by councillor Donovan. On the question, councillor Bigger.
Thank you, Worship. I just wanted to point out, uh, and thank you for the letter that you wrote regarding, uh, the Digby Ferry. And the, uh, the fundy rose and the concerns that have been expressed, a lot of the potential that it could be, um. Uh, sort of reallocated, uh, within bay ferries and I just, uh. Wanted to say how disappointed I am to, uh, imagine that being removed. I think it's a really vital tourist and commercial link that we have. And, uh, I grew up on the west side of Saint John, Lower West, in fact, Duke Street, baby. And, uh, I can't imagine, uh, that ferry being removed and there's been. Much said in the local media by, uh, a a lot by the trucking industry. But of course, uh, from a tourism perspective, uh, it's really vital. And again, as somebody who travels a lot, as a musician and artist, I really take advantage of things like that as well. And so I just wanted to say I appreciate your letter being put forward and I I trust that, uh. All of these cumulative, you know, there'll be a cumulative effect from all of this outcry going up about it. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bigger, and certainly as part of the Regional Services Commission. Uh, there was outrage, quite frankly, uh, among all of the representatives there. And, uh, there was a letter that was going from each of the mayors and also from the Regional Service Commission, so. Uh, you know, it it's important, yes, as a a tourism, uh, feature. But it's also extremely important as part of our economic, uh, enhancement and, uh, having envisioned. Uh, CEO here this evening, Mr. Beckett, talking about how important it is to develop our economic, uh. Uh, file here, uh, that would have been, what we would have felt, uh. Would have been very detrimental to our area. So, thank you for that. Deputy Mayor Skryer.
Question on that, the the decision was reversed. Yes, so the ferry, the ferry remains as is.
It's been moved by councillor Olson and seconded by. Councillor Donovan. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried six-zero. I would just like to encourage people to go out to the, uh, Para Cup Games. They are fascinating to watch. They're high. Speed, it's hockey at its best. Uh, so certainly, you know, tomorrow, there are a couple of games. Friday, there are, uh, some playoff games and into Saturday. So. Please check the schedules and, uh, come out and support Canada tomorrow night against the United States. And, uh, we certainly look forward to seeing you there. Also, our dreamland is lit up. And it looks absolutely phenomenal right now with the snow, so. Everyone is welcome to come and join us out in Quispam Sis at the Cublex and at the Arts and Culture Park. And business arising from committee of the whole, there is none. Looking for an adjournment, please. It's been moved by councillor Olson. I think we covered everything tonight. Do we need a secondary on that? Uh, secondary on that, please. Moved by deputy mayor Skryer. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried unanimously. Have a good night, everyone. Travel safely.